I think five, six, nine are really where you see probably competitive races. And you guys are the competitive champions, which every other competitive race is not.
Exactly. That's a great line of saying.
Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly. That's a great line of saying. Exactly.[186.75]
Hello, my name is Millennium Woods. You can call me Mr. Woods. I'm running for mayor and offering you all an audit on the both state and federal government. This is a challenge to the federal and state government, challenging the civil rights that has been neglected for all of these generations. And like I said, putting trade back into the schools, teaching traditional financial literacy, along with a lot of different types of other literacies. And like I said, my main thing is the government needs to be audited, and it only is going to take everyone to do so. We have instructions already. Like I said, history is my playbook, and I plan to use, utilize every resource and advantage of the municipality to bring this audit to the government. Thank you.
Thank you each for that. Our first question is, Fort Worth mayor is a nonpartisan position, but partisan politics often come into play with council decision-making. How would you navigate political divides around the council dais and work to ensure the needs of all Fort Worth residents are met? Ms. Wood, we can go ahead and start with you, and then go to the right and circle back to Mr. Woods.
You know, I don't believe in a hard, fast line between Democrats and Republicans. There's crossover, there's room for negotiation. I think what we need to do is just try to bring people together, let's focus on the things we do agree upon, and let's work for a solution for everyone.
It's kind of what I do. I build consensus. We'll develop a plan, figure out what's working and what's not, and focus on those things. So, very quickly, I'm nonpartisan, not really interested in the left or the right. I'm more interested in the 75% of us that aren't being properly served. I don't know that the left or the right wants a crack house in their neighborhood, or the homeless worrying about... And I also want to, when I speak about homelessness, I don't mean it in a derogatory form. There are people who happen to not have a home, and we need to look at that in a more, well, in a more nonpartisan way.
Yeah, I do believe that our city has become very partisan, considering the current events. If you look at what's happening at the federal level with the deportations, mass deportations, while SB 8 is passing through the House, our county sheriff is the most right-wing extremist sheriff that there is. He was endorsed by the Constitutional Sheriff Organization, which was out of John Eastman's Claremont Institute, which led to January 6th. So when we have a city that's in a red county, in a red state, in a red nation, if the city's actually blue, we should have a government that is representative of the population. Only 4.5, 4% of the residents of Fort Worth voted in the last municipal election, which is not representative. So I would challenge all of Fort Worth citizens to get out and vote so that we have actually a government that's representative of the people. And again, I want to note that Mattie Parker is endorsed by the True Texas Project. This is an organization that's right-wing extremist, and they believe in the great replacement theory that's in line with all of these mass deportation legislation, legislation that's passing at the national and state level.
I would try to work, to try to bring both parties together, to try to help the common good for the people of Fort Worth. Because, living here for so long, I've 32 years, I've actually get to talk to a bunch of people around Fort Worth to get ideas of what, their ideas of what they would like to see Fort Worth like, how some people in my neck of the woods.
Um, wait. Don't take this off my dime. I guess it's on, sorry. Well, you know, elections in cities that are supposedly nonpartisan, they're not nonpartisan. Because there's two classes in Fort Worth. There's working people, the working class, and there's the very wealthy and upper-middle class. And that's really what this election represents. Because the very wealthy control who gets elected in the city of Fort Worth, and any other city for that matter, and including the President of the United States. That's why my party believes that working people have to break with these capitalist parties completely. We have to quit supporting the Democrats and Republicans. It's no way forward. This is a crucial question, because the key to humanity moving forward, preventing a World War III, preventing nuclear war, which we see the possibilities for with what's going on in the world, is to break from relying on the promises from the capitalist parties, and fight for the working class to take political power, and join the worldwide struggle for socialism. That's what my party believes.
Personally, to me, unity is very, very important in a time like this. There's a lot of things around the country that I know you all are familiar with, with the January 6th, and extirpations, and the things that the government been overstepping their boundaries, and they're not knowing their place, right? And so, the people serves as this fourth checks of balance, right? And until the people stand up and say something, and as mayor, as a representative, the head, right, I will set this standard and investigate these claims, and get down to the bottom of it. And so, like I said, most of what I'm looking at now is a disregard for the rule of law, right? And putting this back into place, setting the standard, right, and being the standard, right, will show everyone else, set the precedence across the whole country.
Thank you each for your response. This question is from our co-host, Steer Fort Worth. Fort Worth recently announced plans for an urban rail system emanating from downtown. What are your priorities for improving Fort Worth's transit infrastructure in terms of both streets and transportation development with Trinity Metro? Mr. Lucas, if you want to take this question first, we can go to the right again after your response.
Absolutely. With Trinity Metro, I think the master plan for Fort Worth includes expanding the rail system all the way down to like 8th Avenue and beyond. I'm in favor of this plan. I think the more public transportation we have, the better it is, not only for the environment, but for our residents. I was speaking with a young man yesterday. He came to the community center up at the church, and he was trying to get food and clothing. And he doesn't have a car, he doesn't have a job, and he was sort of in, he was groaning the lack of public transportation that we have that runs late. So if he has like a night shift, or he has a job that works late into the night, he doesn't have the ability to get back to the shelter. And so this is something that I'm in favor for, to expand our public transportation, as well as the hours that they operate.
I would be for the improving more for TRE, because I've been, I've used the public transportation before, and have taken the TR, the Trinity railroad all the way from downtown Fort Worth to Dallas, to do stuff in Dallas. So, if I was mayor, I'd probably want to try to at least make more improvements for the public transportation.
These are big questions, and it's not just transportation that we need, it's also housing, it's other things, hospitals. And I believe we need to fight, led by the unions, to build these things for, we need to fight for a federally funded mass public works program to build affordable housing. Rents in this area have increased 47% over the last five years. You can't afford to buy a house in Fort Worth, impossible in Dallas-Fort Worth. The availability of adequate housing, like everything else, is sharply class-divided. So we have to organize to fight for these things, and demand a federally funded mass public works program, and organize a fight led by the unions, and that's what I would do if elected mayor. I would mobilize working people to fight for these things.
Mr. Woods?
Transportation, I actually ride the bus, and, you know, use electric bike, get around the city very good that way. I've met a lot of people that does, ride the bus too as well. Like I said, I do a lot of trade work and a lot of things like that, when in the bus system, you have to have a time, a schedule, and you have to meet that time schedule, and if you don't, then you miss the bus, whatever event that you have going forward. But like I said, I think that we should, like I said, bring this and address this issue up to the state and federal government, just due to the funding part of the city, right? The federal and state government has plenty of money to handle certain issues like this. And it takes a person to bring this to their attention. And like I said, the only way to do this is to take it to the courts, right? My plan is to take all of this issues that you all have, and take it to the courts using the full power of the municipality of this city.
I currently rely on public transportation, and many times I'm surprised that I can't get to certain parts of the city or certain attractions that I would think the bus would take you to. And, you know, with my health insurance, I don't get to choose my doctors when I get referred, and literally sometimes I have to walk like an hour and a half. I take the bus as far as it'll go, or the train, and I literally walk like an hour and a half to the appointment, then an hour and a half back. So really, it really does need to be expanded to cover a lot of the key attractions within Fort Worth, and then just cover more areas so that you don't have to walk so far if you do have a doctor's appointment.
I've been advocating for urban rail for probably 20 years now. It's been a conversation for a while. And not just moving people, transportation, not just transportation and public works, but housing, like you said, and education, economic development, they all play together. So yes, I'm an advocate for urban rail, and I would love to see it actually happen, especially since we're the fourth-largest city, and we love to talk about, you know, how great that is. We need to be able to move a million people effectively.
Our next question is, the mayor will have a role in making a huge hire for Fort Worth, picking a new police chief to take over from Chief Neil Noakes. How would you approach that hire, and how do you plan to involve the city's diverse communities in the decision? Mr. Woods, we could start with you, and then just go down the line?
Like I said, the new chief, if he's up to it, like I said, put together a task force to actually go and investigate the old civil rights, to see if it's properly been upheld. And if not upheld, is he going to go in and enforce these principles and laws, right? I hope that any administration or anybody that does come in to, will be open to this idea.
The first characteristic that I would look for is I want a fighter, someone who's going to fight, you know, for changes that need to be made within the Fort Worth Police Department. I would look for someone that's brave, and someone that thinks outside the box and is creative, to come up with some solutions to some really tough problems. I would seek feedback from the community, not just in a forum format, but also reach out to everyone across the community, from criminals to the upper class, to the middle class, just about what are the needs for the Police Department and for the new chief. But I would really just reach out to as many people as I could.
Same. I would like to ask every voter and every resident how they would like for us to do it moving forward. The police reform experts in 2020 told us what we could do for a better Police Department. So once we decide who we want, I mean, we already have the directions in place. And better yet, in 2018, we did the Fort Worth Task Force on Race and Culture, and in there it described how we could build a better relationship between us and the police. So I guess I would ask you, how do you guys want us to find our next police chief? We know what we need to do to train him.
So several things. I think, first and foremost, we need to do a national search, bring this job opportunity to the, you know, the entire market. We need a police chief that can navigate a culture where the police, for instance, with the Cultural and Racial Task Force, they said that we have an issue of systemic racism here in Fort Worth. And one of the solutions to that was the Oversight Board that our current mayor voted against. She believes we have the best police force in the nation, and we don't need that oversight. However, with our current climate, they're looking at getting the FBI, this is part of Project 2025, and so we're going to lose this valuable oversight from the FBI. I think right now it's more important than ever to have more oversight with the police. So I would motion, or I would move to have that done, as well as utilize our diversion center, which is going unused. Robert Miller was arrested, I think, here in District 8, because he was homeless outside in Camden. They asked him to move his stuff, he wouldn't, he got frustrated, he kicked the cop car, and there was damage to the car, and it was only $1 over the amount in order to incarcerate him. He ended up dead because of sickle cell anemia, even though he didn't have sickle cell anemia. And so, these are the kinds of things that are going on in our city that we need to look at, utilizing diversion centers for that are live.
Your time is up, sorry.
That's okay. Sorry.
I would want to try to find the best qualified police chief to try to help with some, and I do agree with what some of these people say about what should be qualified for the next police chief too. So that's, like I say, do like a national search for him, or her.
You know, the question of the police chief, who's going to be the police chief? You know, the thing about police is their history and their reason for being is to defend private property and capitalist relations in every city and throughout the country. And that's what they do. And they're also designed to intimidate working people, keep working people in our place. That's why they terrorize working-class communities with police brutality and other things. In saying that, I don't think police should just be done away with or defunded, because until working people build a different kind of society, you face all kinds of problems with petty crime, drug addiction, all the social ills that come from the breakdown of this system, which are going to grow, which are going to grow. And that's something that the working class has to tackle. We can't depend on who's going to be the next police chief to do this. We have to take these problems up and begin to fight for a different kind of society.
We're just about out of time for this race, so at this time, I'll ask each of you to make your closing remarks, and just summarize what makes you the best candidate for the position of Fort Worth mayor. Mr. LaBelle, if you'd like to start, we can move on to Ms. Kennedy and circle back to Mr. Woods.
I think the main reason why I probably think I'd be a good candidate, because I've lived in Fort Worth for 32, out of the 40 years I've lived in Texas, and I'm seventh-generation Texan, so I know what it's like to be a Texan.
Well, I'm a worker, I'm a union member, I represent the working class, and we need a class change. Whether or not humanity goes forward in this country, in Fort Worth, in the world, is whether or not which class rules. And if we continue along the lines, everything that happens in the world affects our lives in Fort Worth. That's why my party condemned the October 7th Hamas pogrom against Jews in Israel. That's why we defend Israel's right to exist as a safe haven for Jews. That's why I joined rallies supporting sovereignty from Ukraine, for Ukraine, and opposed to Putin's invasion. All these things are connected, and it, you know, I do a lot of campaigning in working-class neighborhoods. Workers are very concerned about the future. They say many times, they're worried about whether or not their children are going to survive with another world war, with the development of nuclear weapons that exist. So these are, these are big questions, and that's why I think I should be elected, because my party represents the way forward, the only way forward for the working class and people in general.
Ms. Kennedy, you're turning us up.
Thank you, everybody, for giving me this opportunity. I want to let you all know, Kennedy has been hitting a lot of key points on the world, the events that's going on right now. And like I said, let us not be ignorant to know what's going on, right? It's the lack of knowledge, and the lack of passing down the traditions of knowledge that is an enemy towards not only this city, but this country, right? And in order for us to move past a certain place from this, is we have to teach the rules of the game in their schools, K through 12, not no one-year civics class. The rules of the game needs to be taught, right? In order for these kids to grow up into the society that they were taught to be in, right? It says, "Train up a child in the way, and he shall go; and when he's older, he will not depart from his instructions," right? These are things, principles, basic principles that are held within us since we were little, if was taught properly, right? It's the unproper traditions being passed down, right? We need to, we need to do more, we need to do better.
A couple more items from my platform. I would combine council meetings and public comment meetings to ensure citizen voices are consistently heard. I would provide guidance to citizens on how to effectively communicate at council meetings. And I would enhance crime prevention efforts, including expansion of mental health resources. The reason why I would make a great mayor is because I am a fighter. I started attending the council meetings last fall, and I have spoken at 14 council meetings. I am a fighter. I will fight for all citizens on all issues. I will get you an answer, I will fight for you.
So yeah, thank you guys for having me. Lawrence Walker for mayor. I already work with the city, the council, the departments, I work with my neighborhood association, I'm kind of already doing the work, I have been for several years, and I'm confident that if you elect me, you will be pleased with my performance. Thank you.
Again, my name is Josh Lucas, and I'm running to be the next mayor of Fort Worth. The solutions that I have for our city is very simple. I think we need to have affordable housing, we need to have youth programs that are enriched with the diverse cultural arts that Fort Worth is known for, we need a robust diversion program, and we need a citizen review board. Those are the issues that I'm running on. We have a decision about what kind of Fort Worth we're going to walk into in the next few months, and given the current political climate, I would ask that you vote for me instead of the alternative, because I too am a fighter. I've been involved in criminal justice reform at the county and local level almost for four years now. And there was a short story that stayed with me from college, it's called "The Ones Who Walk Away From Omeleus." It's about a small town where the suffering of a child is dependent on the joy that the city sees. And the story ends by there are those who walk away from Omeleus. But I refuse to walk away from Omeleus. I believe in my city, I was born and raised here, I'm not going anywhere. I will continue to fight regardless of the outcome of this election, and that's why I believe that you should vote for me.
Thank you each for coming and for sharing your platforms tonight. At this time, I'll ask the mayoral candidates to exit the stage to the right, and the District 5 candidates to come join the stage to the left. As everyone gets situated again, just a little background on District 5. The district includes parts of East Fort Worth, including the historic Stop 6 neighborhood. The district seat is open, as incumbent council member Gina Bibbins is stepping down after 12 years representing the district. Just a quick reminder that each candidate is allowed 60 seconds to respond to each question. If you each could be sure to speak into the mic so everyone in the room can hear. Our volunteers with the League of Women Voters will let you know when your time is up. With that, we'll just jump right into introductions. There are six candidates competing for the seat, but unfortunately, Ken Bowens couldn't make it last minute due to a personal emergency. I'll go ahead and let each of the rest of you introduce yourselves, and tell us a little bit about why you're running. Mr. Diaz, if you'd like to start, we can circle back to Mr. Willoughby and just go down the line.
Hi, Cecilia. Can you talk?
There should be a button at the top.
Right at the clock. Anyway, my name is Marvin Delve Diaz. I am a resident of District 5 for the last 10 years, 15 years total in Fort Worth. I am not from here originally, I'm a first-generation American, immigrant parent from Central America. So, si necesitamos hablar español, te vengo a hablar español conmigo, amigo hispano. I'm running for District 5 because I've done a lot of good things with my own homeowner association, and also worked for the city on improvements on Long Trinity Boulevard. So, I'm looking at my last 30 seconds. I am a private industry veteran, a financial controller, spent all my life building coalitions, working on projects, holding people accountable, and making sure that we live within an established budget. So hopefully tonight, we can get to be a little bit more of me. I see some familiar faces from other roundtables and town halls, so thank you for hosting us, Fort Worth reporter.
Mr. Willoughby?
Oh, okay. Okay. Are we on? Hey, we're on, hey! Okay, okay. I'll make this quick. Most people know me, I ran five times. I'm the only person that ever has so much knowledge about the city as I do. I've been to 100 council meetings, bond meetings. How do you know what's going on if you don't go down there and speak at council? If you can't even go down there and speak or see what's going on, you don't know what's going on, no knowledge, you lose the battle. My number one, because we only got a minute, which is no good. My website, there's a billboard at 8:20, 30, that's my website. You can learn more on that website about these candidates than you can any worse in this city. Okay, I've got 30 seconds. My main platform is to move the PLA. When you see these candidates that got PLA signs, they're being bought. Read the book, there's a chapbook out by them that they wrote. Book 4, Chapter 18, tells us how they removed Danny Scarf and put Kerry Moon in office. The PLA, we don't need it. The police need to put their money in their pocket, follow the same laws as we do. That's my big platform, because to undermine our election with the Firefighter Association, Star Telegram, PLA, those three are undermining our election. You can't get nothing done until we get good candidates in, we can't get them in, because I got to stop.
Well, hi. My name is Deborah Peoples. I think I am the perfect candidate, because I am a combination of head and heart. I have the administrative ability to run this job, I understand the issues, but I also have the heart, because I've been working in community for many years. And I firmly believe that the residents of District 5 should pick their representative and not PACs. We have critical issues facing our neighborhoods today. We have issues around housing, around taxes, around jobs, around transportation, and we can't do it when these PACs are buying the seat and they have a person voting for them and not for the residents.
I'm Pastor Michael Moore, and I am a resident of Stop 6. I was born and raised in Stop 6. I am a neighborhood president of my neighborhood association, Historic Stop 6 Neighborhood Association. I have served on the Historic Landmark Commission, two terms. I am presently serving as Parks Board member. I sit as the, I sit as the co-chair to Parks Board. I'm running because I'm already working. I'm working because I care about my community. I'm boots on the ground, I'm not going to learn the job, I'm doing the job. And so I'm running to continue the work that Mayor Pro Tem Gina Bibbins has done, moving our community forward, and with her endorsement today, I will continue that legacy.
My name is Mary Kelleherd, and I won't win any awards for public speaking, but anyone who knows me knows that my heart's in the right place. I currently serve you on the Board of the Tarrant Regional Water District, and have for eight years now. We serve Tarrant County and 10 other counties. I've been living in District 5 for 30 years, and in 2010, I started researching different neighborhood issues, and since then, I'm still doing it. Any neighbors that have issues with zoning changes, or flooding, stormwater ordinances, urban forestry issues, just all of the issues that we have in District 5, I get in there, I research it, I know how to navigate City Hall and help people solve their problems. So I work for the people.
Our next question is from our co-host, Steer Fort Worth. East Fort Worth residents have reported longstanding challenges with economic development Our next question is from our co-host Steer Fort Worth. East Fort Worth residents have reported longstanding challenges with economic development, infrastructure, and city investment. What specific initiatives will you champion to attract businesses and create job opportunities in District Five? Pastor Moore, if you'd like to start, we can go to the right before circling back to Mr. Willoughby.
Well, I think the first challenge that we face is the, um, average household income in our area is, is low. In order to beat that or to improve that, we've got to improve on literacy. When we really consider the problem that this city is facing, it's literacy. If we cannot learn, we cannot earn. And what's gonna attract businesses is when we have a educated workforce. Our future depends on literacy. And I think that what we all should be concerned about is that our future is going to be bleak. If, if it exists at all, if we don't do something about literacy.
District Five is basically a, a desert as far as grocery stores, amenities, things, things like that, services. That has to stop. We have been seen as the stepchild for too long in District Five. And it's time to provide whatever services we need in District Five to be successful. District Five is very, very diverse, so the needs are different in every neighborhood. But we need to apply any, um, we, we just need to work with every neighborhood individually and meet their needs.
Mr. Diaz.
This, this process has been very interesting for me and I've, I've been able to learn a whole lot more about where I live. But I think in, in, in southeast Fort Worth, east part of, of the town, we really need to focus on the human issues first. You know, we have, we need to make sure people are not subject to human trafficking. We need to make sure that the, the folks experiencing homelessness have a home. And then we gotta work on, you know, fixing the infrastructure, the streets that are just in horrible shape. You know, not all the lights are on and things like that. So, we need, we need to peel away the onion, um, and address this stuff, you know, once and for all. But I think there's a lot of good stuff to be done in, in this historical southeast part of Fort Worth, especially Lancaster Avenue.
Mr. Willoughby.
Are we on? Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. Nothing gets done. It starts with you, me, and us. We don't hold anybody accountable after they get elected. No one goes down there. Mayor Parker took away our right to speak at city council. And I'm gonna bet money not one of y'all will call and ask her to put back our public presentation on the agenda. All the other cities have free speech. We don't. No one will say a word to her. They won't cross her. I'll tell you this. The city will not respect you unless you respect yourself. And you have to not be free to go down there and speak up and tell the truth like I do. I'm an outcast because I go down there and tell her. And I do things against Mattie Parker, but I'll tell you one thing about Mattie Parker, she respects me. She knows to because I stand up to her, okay? She's not doing her job and we're not doing our job. It doesn't matter who you elect. If we don't go down there and hold them accountable for what they say now, we're not doing our job. That's because the media doesn't tell us anything about what's going on. That's where we're going wrong. We're not teaching in schools. It's an obligation, not a privilege to take care of your city. We got a comment meeting down there for you to go down there and speak and I gotta stop again.
So, I walk every day and knock on doors in neighborhoods across District Five. And I will tell you that neighborhoods feel like they're under assault. They're not being represented. They're not being listened to. Their issues are not being raised. So when you talk about what I would do is I would bring neighborhoods and stakeholders together to come up with a plan. They'd know I'd be transparent. I'd be available to them. I'd answer their calls. And I would work with them to come up with plans to bring jobs, to bring businesses, and not just industrial businesses, but to bring businesses and bring transportation to District Five.
City council members will have a role in making a huge hire for Fort Worth. Picking a new police chief to take over from Chief Neil Knokes. How would you approach that hire? And how do you plan to involve the city's diverse communities in the decision? Mr. Willoughby, if you'd like to start, we can just go all the way down the line.
Can I have Brian's time too? He's not here. Okay. This is a good one. I like this one. I've chased the chief police out of the city hall three times to the camera. When we have a police chief that runs into camera and don't answer questions, see, there's a bogus report. Remember. Gina Bibbins had me removed from a political event by the police. It's on film. It got the most hits. She used the police to move a political opponent. They wrote a bogus report. I went to Chief Neil Knokes. He runs away. He ran and ran. When we get a new chief in, you watch my website. You get my website, check it because I'm up doing it year round. I go to board meetings, school meetings, everything. I do it year round. But anyway, when the new chief gets in, I'm waiting. I'm waiting. I'm gonna give him my camera. He needs to rewrite that report. I don't care what it means. It means to me. Talking about respect, you don't write a bogus report about me not doing it. Our police can do that and get away with it. We're not writing. It's gotta be fixed. I believe no matter how small it is, if it's wrong, stop and fix it. My wife sure didn't make me do it. Thank you.
So, I have personal experience with this. I am the sister of a policeman. I am the sister of a Tarrant County Constable. I am the sister of a Tarrant County Court of Appeals Judge. I know what good policing looks like. I know because I have been the recipient of good policing. It's transparency. It's being in the community. It's building relationships. I want a chief that's going to be out in the community, building those relationships. I want a, uh, chief that's transparent and honest. And I want to work with all segments of the policemen, of police across all organizations to make sure that we are hiring the right kind of people to police our communities.
I think that the next hire of a police chief in Fort Worth needs to follow the pattern of the ch, police chief that we have now. Our police chief has committed himself to community policing. What that means is that the policy and internal policy of the police department is about building relationships, not just, uh, carrying out the law. And I think that when we build relationships, our citizens are safe and our police officers are safe. What I have worked to do with the East Division is make sure that you send officers to our beats who see us as citizens and not as a threat to their life. And we work constantly with our police officers. The NPO program is an excellent program. And the heart of Chief Knokes is what we should look for in the next police chief.
Well, I would definitely make sure that the process is as transparent as, as possible. I mean, it, without transparency, it's, it's no good. That's the first thing. Um, we also need to find someone who can get along with, with everyone in Fort Worth. Not just, uh, the west side or the north side or it has to be, it's so, Fort Worth, one thing that we all love about it is it's so diverse. And we have to have a police chief that can, um, relate well to everyone in Fort Worth.
By design, you know, the city council is not in, in the initial hiring stages. So, by design, we have to rely on, on city manager Jay Chappa to make the right choice, right? So, once, once we get that far, we can understand what the background is. I think the most important thing is, is to get someone, you know, in, in private business, we talk about management by walking around. And management by walking around means you're never in the office because you're out in the street and you're out building commitment with the different communities. So, I've always said I would, I would take the first person, uh, gal or, or guy and drag him out to my associations, my own neighborhoods and say, this is a good meet. And we're gonna build commitment and you're gonna be accessible. And I think that's what, that's the most we can do as council people, is to get involved very early with the, the, uh, the incoming police chief.
District Five is very diverse in terms of income, race, and neighborhood type. How would you represent the various communities across the district? Ms. Peoples, if you'd like to start, we can go down the line before looping back to Mr. Willoughby.
I think you have to be there. You have to be out in community. You have to go to neighborhood meetings. You have to know these communities. You have to be willing to make it a full-time job. And everybody, then you bring people together and find common issues that we can work on. Is it taxes? Is it, uh, public safety? But that is what I do right now, is I work across the district. And I have visited just about every neighborhood in the district. I don't pay somebody to go walking for me. I walk myself because I want to know what the issues are, what your concerns are, and how we can start to solve those. So I think I'm already doing that and I will continue to do that. Whether you're the richest neighborhood or you're the poorest neighborhood, I'm gonna be there.
Collaboration across the district is what you do. It's what I do now as a neighborhood president. I work with other neighborhood presidents. I work with H O A presidents. And so we work on issues. We talk about zoning issues. And once I'm the district representative for District Five, I will continue to work across this district, collaborating with the stakeholders in each community, finding out what's special about those communities, and finding out how we can work to improve the district as a whole.
I've been serving District Five neighborhoods since 2010. I have an excellent reputation that I'm very proud of. Any neighbors that have issues, they know. All they have to do is pick up the phone and call me and I'm there to help them. I've, being able, running for city council's just been, opened my eyes as to how many diverse cultures we have in District Five. And I'm, I'm a people person and I like to get along with, with all different cultures. And, um, this has just been a, a fun process and that's what I'll keep on doing. Everything that I've been doing since 2010, putting the people first.
District Five is pretty interesting because it's about a thousand miles long and about three miles wide, you know, right? So, uh, we can't throw everything and everybody in the same basket. Uh, I live out, way out, way out east, uh, on Trinity towards three sixty. So, we have different needs over there than we have over here on the, on the, the true east side. You know, with Woodhaven and Stop Six and things like that. So, um, I can, but I can tell you as an example, in, you know, my neighborhood of four hundred houses. I, I live over there in Stone Creek, Highway one fifty-seven and, and Trinity. And I can tell you that ninety percent of the four hundred houses are foreign-born people. So I have to take the time to teach them, you know, our lifestyle because they don't really know. And so I have to politely, politely tell them, this is how we do things in America. And, and it's hung together well, but that doesn't really apply to Woodhaven or Stop Six. So, we have to be flexible enough to, to listen to every single neighborhood and see, you know, what do we, what are the priorities? But it's a very interesting, uh, district that we have.
Mr. Willoughby.
Okay. Yeah, he's right. It's different. I've walked this district three or four times. That's the only way I lose weight by putting, uh, leaflets out. And I've been to the south end. There was bars on the windows of the houses, okay? All but, not for beauty, bars because of the, the crime and how it is over there and the barware. You go to the north end and walk that where Gina Bibbins hangs out, where she stayed at, where she put her billboard, where she stayed at, north end. All the streets are pretty, sidewalks, parks, no bars. This is the same district we're talking about. And you don't see it on the map. You have to walk it. That's why I know there's two crack houses right across the street from Hanley Middle School right now. Does anybody give a damn? No, they don't. You tell them, they don't do anything. Okay? This is why I'm mad. I've been to this for ten years. I've seen this whole thing. It's like living Groundhog Dog Day, repeat it. Same thing. We get the same thing, same kind of questions. I had a good point and I lost it. I hate that. Can we start over? No. But anyway, um, oh, oh, Lake Arlington. We need outside money. It's a jewel where people are jumping trash. It'd be ideal for a children's amusement park, petting zoo, small amphitheater. And I gotta stop again. I just get going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willoughby. We're just about out of time for this race. So at this time, I'll ask each of you to make your closing remarks and summarize what makes you the best candidate for the position of Fort Worth City Council Member representing District Five. Ms. Kelleherd, if you'd like to start.
Sure. I'm proven leader. I've served Tarrant County and ten other counties, um, on the water district for ten years. I've brought, I mean, for eight years, I've brought transparency and accountability to that agency, which was full of corruption and cleaned it up. I want to do the same thing at city council. I want to bring accountability and transparency. I'm there for the people. They know it. And I just want to do more of it. I, I just love serving the people, so I hope to have the opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz.
This is about the fifteenth town hall that we do. And I'm, I'm, I'm honored to have Ma, Mary and Pastor Moore and Deborah and Bob Willoughby. And so I hope you see some energy up here because we all want to do something for the city. So, but, but why am I the best? Because I think I have the leadership skills. I've led, you know, hundreds and thousands of people in my private life. I worked for the world's airline, world's largest airline in managing money, holding people accountable, asking people for ideas, listening ninety percent of the time. So I think that I'm the person that can go downtown and watch the mayor, you know, watch the city manager and let's talk, you know, nuts and bolts. I, I don't want to talk about ideas and theories. I'm not gonna redesign the government, but I'm sure going to make sure everybody follows the rules and we don't leave any money on the table for District Five.
I'm the only pan, candidate on this panel who is boots on the ground. I'm not running because I want to learn the job. I'm running because I'm already doing the job. And just the other day, the longest-serving council member in the city of Fort Worth endorsed me to succeed her. And she's not doing it because of what I'm going to do. She's, did it because of what I'm doing. Because I've been second chair to her. I've, I've watched how she's led the district. And she knows my passion for the district and she knows that I care about the district. And so I'm asking you to vote for me because of what I'm already doing and what I will continue to do to move District Five forward.
Mr. Willoughby, you can go next and we'll end with you, Ms. Peoples.
I love a twenty-minute debate with Mr. Moore, but he won't give it. Okay. I believe in action and not talk. I'm sick of talk. I've seen it for years. What we're doing, what I've done, is I rented a studio. We're, this time, we've got thirty seats for sale. Twenty dollars a seat tomorrow night, Woodhaven Studio. Come up with, website, you can see where it's at. All the money goes to St. Jude Children's Hospital, one hundred percent. I'm putting a hundred dollars in my pocket in there too. If you want to come out, great. If you don't, fine. We don't care. We're shooting another video. Mary met with me in the studio. We shot a thirty-minute interview with her. You watch it on our website, you'll get to know the employees. I'm sorry, Ms. Peoples, and Moore would not come in and take the questions. You cannot be transparent if you can't answer questions. People won't answer questions to me because I know too damn much. That's why they won't take them from me. Mary's coming in. We're gonna do part two. What we left it off was the unaggressive and the too aggressive. Let's see how it comes out. You can see it on my website or you can donate to charity and come have a good time with us tomorrow night and bring the liquor. Um, twenty dollars a seat. All goes to St. Jude Children's Hospital. I'm tired of talk. Let's do, you'll get to really see what's going on. Can I buy that sign from you and I can have some more time? I'm out.
Fortunately not, Mr. Willoughby.
Again, I'm Deborah Peoples and I'm asking for your vote tonight because I have the skill set to be able to do this job. But more importantly, I will be an independent voice for the residents of District Five. Residents should pick their person, not PACs. We cannot have someone who is beholden to large PACs for their vote. I will represent the citizens of District Five. It will be a full-time job for me. I will make sure that your needs, your wishes, your concerns are worked on and are met.
Thank you each for coming tonight and for sharing your platforms. Now we'll take a few minutes for the District Five candidates to exit, either to the right or the left. And then District Six candidates can start making their way up to the stage. Today we'll be hearing from three candidates for Fort Worth City Council District Six. District Six includes parts of southwest Fort Worth, plus the historically black neighborhood of Como. The district's seat is also open, as incumbent council member Jared Williams is stepping down. A quick reminder for candidates that you're each allowed 60 seconds per question, and if you could please make sure you're speaking into the mic so that everyone in the room can hear. Unfortunately, candidate Marshall Hobbs couldn't make it last minute, but we have three of the other candidates running today, and I'll go ahead and let each of you introduce yourselves, say your name, a little bit about yourself, and why you're running for District Six. If you would like to start, Mr. Davis.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone, my name is Darryl Davis. I am a native of Fort Worth, I've lived in this city for 43 years. When I think about introducing myself, I simply introduce myself as Taylor and Gavin's dad. I am a proud father of two amazing children, a 15-year-old daughter and a 10-year-old son, and really, they shape my reasons and my why for everything that I do. I want to build a city, and particularly a district in District Six, that I am proud to raise my children in, just like many of the residents that I've had the privilege of sharing with, as we've had community listening sessions throughout the district. I currently serve as the board president in Crowley Independent School District, where I was elected in 2022. Because of the confidence that my colleagues had in me, I was elected to serve as board president in 2024, which I still do today. Professionally, I serve as the vice president of workforce and career development for a social enterprise called Upspire, which you all probably see the blue trucks and the trailers navigating through our city, helping to abate litter. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Mia Hall, and I'm running to be the next council member for District Six. I have resided in District Six for 22 years, my husband of 24 years, and I have raised our family in District Six. I have a senior who attends here at Texas Wesleyan University. I am a committed, dedicated volunteer. I have served as a Crowley ISD trustee, where I have served since 2015. I have served as a zoning commissioner for the city of Fort Worth under our present councilman, Jared Williams. I am a 24-year veteran educator with Fort Worth ISD, where I started as a substitute teacher and climbed the ranks to executive director. I founded the Young Women's Leadership Academy, which is still a jewel in the crown of the Fort Worth Independent School District. I'm running on safe neighborhoods, improved infrastructure, and the right type of economic development for our Como community and southwest Fort Worth. I believe that I'm the best person for the seat because I have experience, and I'm a proven leader, and I have a track record of success. Thank you.
Greetings to each of you, my name is Adrian Devine Smith. Since 2021, I, I've dedicated my time, presence, and voice at Fort Worth City Hall for the purpose of greater transparency, accountability, and consideration from those currently elected. I'm the only candidate who's advocated for better government efficiency from an out-of-touch mayor and city council that are self-serving unto themselves rather than the people. From massive multi-million dollar lawsuits settlements to whistleblowers, library and community center closures, defunding for the arts, ordinance changes to deny rights for certain groups because of their beliefs, and the blatant disregard for communities' voices against unwanted development, the list goes on. I've made...
The District Six seat is open, as incumbent council member Jared Williams is not seeking reelection. How would you go about succeeding him, and what would you do similarly or differently? Ms. Hall, we can start with you.
Well, first and not, first and foremost, I want to thank Councilman Williams for his service. I proudly endorse Councilman Williams when he first ran for the office, and I got to serve as his zoning commissioner. I think some of the things that Jared did extremely well was how he engaged our community. He did listening sessions, he made sure that he was present to hear what the concerns were of the community. Of the things that I would do differently, I believe that we have to close the loop on communication. Not only is it important to be present in the community to hear what the issues are and what our citizens want, but it's also important to not, to connect them with the resources and the services that they need to solve those concerns, and it's also important to close the loop by bringing that information back to them. What's going on within the city? What are the answers to those solutions and concerns? What are the strategies that we're employing, and how can we work together? So I think that he's done a great job with listening to our citizens, but I want to take it a step further to make sure that we are engaged, that we're actively engaging the city and lobbying for our interests.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you. So again, I am a proud native of Fort Worth, and it is an honor just to be considered to serve the resident, the residents of District Six in the city of Fort Worth on a greater level. I am proud to say that one of the things that I've prioritized as I've served as a trustee in Crowley ISD, and even now as board president, is that I prioritize presence. I make sure that I am present so that I can hear the concerns of my neighbors, so that I can hear the concerns of constituents, and provide solutions that they can hold me accountable for. One of the things that Dr. Williams has done is he's prioritized neighborhood voices, and that's something that I will continue to do. As a matter of fact, we're already doing that. As, as an effort to understand what the needs and the desires are here in District Six, we've had community listening sessions already, both in the far southwest part of the city, as well as in the Lake Como community. And so prioritizing neighborhood voices, making sure that we are present are the things that I will continue to do, if given the opportunity to serve.
Let me repeat the question, please.
Yeah. The District Six seat is open, as incumbent council member Jared Williams is not seeking reelection. How would you go about succeeding him, and what would you do similarly or differently?
Well, I won't do anything in a similar fashion, but I will, I will ensure that communities, the, the communities within District Six will not have to deal with unwanted development. And then, I will also ensure that I will not be a part of what I, what's a weekly occurrence with our current mayor and council, when they vote things through, with just a single vote, with no, no discussion. We're talking about millions upon millions of dollars of taxpayer money that just gets voted through with no discussion, you know? So I will ensure that, that District Six has a representation who is, will put the people first. That's, that's the number one priority, to put the people first. And a lot of District Six constituents haven't been down to city council, so I will try to advocate more for people, people being involved, and not just relying on a council person to see things through, because it requires you all to be there, and not just the person who sits, sits in a seat.
This question is from our co-host, Steer Fort Worth. Southwest Fort Worth is booming, with the area containing some of the fastest-growing housing developments in the city. How would you balance land used for economic growth with preserving green space? Mr. Smith, if you don't mind starting.
Again, you, you, it, it begins with the community. What does the community want? You know, because I've been stating this, the community is the heartbeat of everything that happens within the given spaces that you all reside. The council person is just the play soda. You cannot just rely on the council person to do what's best for you. Okay? So, just to show of hand, how many of you have ever attended a council meeting? The nu, thank you, the number, the number is low. So, I want to encourage anyone who hasn't been a part of this process to start getting involved. Does the seat matter to me? Yes. But I want to ensure you all, regardless of the seat, if I'm elected on May 30th, I will still be there, I will still be giving my voice to the issues. It's important to me, because we have a genera, we have generations coming up who have to make Fort Worth home. So, again, it's, it's about what you all want, it's not about what I want.
Dr. Hall?
Yes. As a zoning commissioner, I had extensive experience working with zoning, working with developers, and shaped and representing the voice of our community. We are booming in southwest Fort Worth, and so I think it's very important that we preserve our green space, and Rock Creek was an example that Councilman Williams left for us to model. I think that it's very important, I had an opportunity to talk with our previous councilman, Youngness Jordan, about the implications of zoning and the intention that he used to set that zoning for the future. We've deviated from our comprehensive plan on several occasions, whenever someone asks for an exception, but we don't always go back and readdress what those implications and rippling effects would be. So I would be very intentional to ensure that we have proper zoning, that is going to require us to conserve green space. I would work with developers, and to ensure that we, with that development comes green space, and that we preserve that green space. And I would also represent the will of the people in southwest Fort Worth, who don't want the continued dense multifamily zoning. They want to see something different, they want sustainable development in our community.
So there, it's not lost on anyone, that District Six is one of the fastest-growing areas in, in our city. One of the things that I am proud to say that Councilmember Williams has continued to do is to prioritize green spaces. It is important that as we have so much development going on, that we are working harmoniously with developers to ensure that the needs and the desires of the community are met. And so that's one of the things that has continued to rise out of community listening sessions, that we want to protect our green space. We understand that people are moving to District Six at alarming rates, and that's because District Six is a great place to live, it's a great place to work, it's a great place to learn. But as a result of that, we do have a high rate of new developments and whatnot. So, working with those developers, holding them accountable to making sure that they preserve and protect our green space is important. And because this is so important to me, I am proud to say that as of today, I have the endorsement of the Fort Worth Sierra Club, because we are committed to making sure that we protect our green spaces and make sure that our, our city is an environmentally safe place.
We've heard this question a couple times tonight, but I'll ask you each as well. City council members will have a role in making a huge hire for Fort Worth, picking a new police chief to take over from Chief Neil Nokes. How would you approach that hire, and how do you plan to involve the city's diverse communities in the decision? Dr. Hall, if you'd like to start?
What I can say is that I've had the unique experience as a school board trustee of selecting a superintendent. In 2017, we hired Michael McFarlane to the Crowley Independent School District, and in that process, we engaged our community. We had listening sessions, we asked what our community wanted in a leader, we asked our students, we asked our parents, we asked our staff members, and that helped us create a profile of the leader that we were looking for. I would take that same approach in selecting a police chief. And I've already had the opportunity to ask this question of the citizens of District Six, and they want a transparent process. They want a leader that is able to be reflective of the diversity of our city. They want them to hold the officers accountable in our city. They want to make sure that they're properly trained and prepared to have the cultural confidence to work with the diversity of our city. I would ensure that this process is inclusive, that this process represents community voice, and that it is reflective of the will of the city of Fort Worth, as well as District Six.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you. So I'm a stray shooter, and I believe in calling a spade a spade. One of the things, if I had a criticism of our city government, is the fact that oftentimes what happens is we have community members, we have neighbors who allow, who allow their voices to be heard, and as a result, our city government gives us something different than what it is that we asked for. When we look at the Race and Culture Task Force that was mentioned earlier, one of the things that the community asked for was a police oversight board. And instead of receiving that as we asked and even demanded, we got what, what we call the Office of Police Monitor. And so as we are moving forward as a city, as we are looking to hire our chief of police, I think that the important thing that we have to do is we have to make sure that not only do we provide space for residents in this city, for neighbors to be able to allow their voices to be heard, but we also have to listen. And one of the things that residents have continued to say to me is that they want a police chief that puts people first, someone who is willing to make relationships with our community, so that community policing is a real thing in our city.
I will begin you all with stating simply, we need a, we need a police chief from, not from within, we need a police chief from, from without. We need to do a national search and bring in another police chief who knows no, nothing about Fort Worth, because we saw what happened with our last police chief. He was wrongfully terminated, and what did it cost us, we the taxpayers? $5 million, $5,200,000 to be exactly, because he was wrongfully terminated. Why? Because he turned into a whistleblower. Saying, so I want a police chief who's gonna hold officers accountable, hold his, hold his officers, officers accountable, as well as be accountable himself to the, to the position he holds. I've sat in on police law enforcement appeal hearings for, for officers who have disowned the badge. And the city fights tirelessly to try to keep them off the force, but we got a POA, which I, who I consider the bullies of the city, who try to strong-arm the city. So, we need some, we need a police chief from, from out, not within.
This question is from our co-host, Steer Fort Worth. As the city's development expands outward, what is your vision for how the city should address transit, road, and other infrastructure needs in southwest Fort Worth? Mr. Smith, if you'd like to start.
We begin addressing those various issues by being good stewards over the tax dollars that come into the city. Okay? It, it starts there. You know, you all, every election cycle is the same questions. Infrastructure, homelessness, affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. We hear the same talking point, year after year after year. It starts with those who sit in those seats, being good stewards over that and what they're entrusted with, and that starts with our tax dollars. $333,626,188 is what the new city, the new city hall calls sweet to taxpayers. So you want to talk about infrastructure and roads, there go money, there, there's some of the money there. You want to talk about helping the homeless, there, there goes some of the money there. You want to talk about expanded transportation? There you go. So we had, we need, we need individuals who are gonna be physically responsible and good stewards over the tax dollars that come into this city.
Dr. Hall?
Could you please repeat the question? I'm sorry.
No problem. As the city's development expands outward, what is your vision for how the city should address transit, road, and other infrastructure needs in southwest Fort Worth?
So that's a really big question for one minute, but when I, when you ask that question, I can't help but think about our former councilwoman, Ann Zeta. First and foremost, I believe that we have to have mass transit, and so we need to work to do that. We've expanded it somewhat with Trinity Metro, but there's a lot of room to grow and improve in that area. I think we also need to work with our developers on building the infrastructure as we go. As a zoning commissioner, so often that we would make deals with them, that they would do certain portions and certain parts and make certain investments after we got to a certain threshold. In doing that, we are experiencing the trouble with that now. We've got traffic circles, we don't have speed mitigation, we don't have stoplights where we need stoplights, and we have increased traffic. And so I believe that we need to work with developers to ensure that we're rebuilding the infrastructure as we go, and we have to also take care of our aging communities, the Como community, southwest Fort Worth, it also has aging communities, and we've got to take care of our roads, and we have to be, make sure that we're accountable, and I'll work with TPNW to make sure that we have a plan on how we're going to continue to build infrastructure and maintain the structures that we currently have. Thank you.
So, traffic safety and infrastructure is one of the largest issues that has been identified amongst my neighbors in, in District Six. As a fast-growing area, unfortunately, this is where I disagree with, with my colleague, because I think we're too busy building as we go, but we need to not only build for where we are, but we need to build for where we're going. Because for me, it doesn't make sense that we have rooftops before we have roads. If we know that our city is growing, we have to make bold, innovative changes that will allow us to begin to, to make the, the infrastructure investments that we need in order so that we are not having some of the, the issues, no disrespect to the people who live in North Fort Worth, but we don't want those issues down in southwest Fort Worth. So, instead of building as we go, we have to build not for where we are, but for where we're going. We know that people are moving to our district at alarming rates, so we need the infrastructure in order for people to navigate safely through our city. And so...
Plans for a new data center in District Six generated outcry from neighbors last year, with Councilmember Williams supporting the project due to its high taxable value of $750 million. How would you go about balancing the desire for more tax revenue generating business in the district with resident concerns? Mr. Davis, if you'd like to start?
Thank you. So as a trust... So as a trustee in Crowley ISD, one of the things that we are always thinking about are how we fund our schools. And I think this is a part of a bigger issue. One of the things that we unfortunately have to deal with because of the inaction on our state level in funding our public schools is we do have to look at those revenue generating partnerships that will allow us to raise funds to continue to have healthy schools. Because the truth of the matter is, healthy schools breed healthy communities. And so although the data center does create a great level of revenue that is going to be beneficial to the students of Crowley ISD, and I appreciate that, I think that it's important also to understand that we cannot lose sight of neighborhood voices. And so, there is a way, I believe, in always finding consensus. We have to always keep the main thing the main thing, but we have to allow everyone to have a seat at the table so that their voices are heard. And I think it's through that collaborative process that we're able to find solutions that benefit all parties involved.
The data center that's been spoken of, it was an unwanted data center. I was there the night of that vote took place. And Dr. Jared Williams, he disregarded the constituents of the district who say they did not want their data center. He blatantly disregarded it. And then after he went to his little spiel about why it was such a good thing, you put in amendments. If something is good for your community, there's no need to put in amendments, you know? You would just vote it through and let it be. But no, Dr. Williams disregarded his own constituents. And Mr. Davis is his close friend. I believe Mia Hall is a friend of his. I don't want to repeat of the incumbent, even if it's not me, but I don't want to repeat of the incumbent, which I feel we would get with either the individuals to my right. So, listening to the community, ensuring that your voices are number one, and not that of developers. Thank you.
So I'd have to say, both of my colleagues have made very valid points today. I do understand the balance between commercial development and residential development, and the higher yield that commercial development brings. But as a former zoning commissioner, what I can tell you is, we have to listen to the will of our citizens and the people who inhabit those neighborhoods. And there's an opportunity to find consensus. And if you're going to have to blatantly just disregard what the will of the citizens are, you don't have to do that, because you can ask for a continuance. And we can continue those requests until we can find some type of consensus that we can all live with. I would never, ever, just completely disregard the will of the people. I believe that our property, most of us homeowners, that's the greatest investment that we all have, and we have to protect that investment. And as an elected official, my job is to represent the people and the will of the people that I represent. And so that is what I would do differently than how that situation was handled, and I would always represent the will and help to find consensus with the developers. Or say no.
This question is from our co-host, Stair Fort Worth. As our population increases, so does the challenge of affordability for renters and prospective homeowners. How would you help to make housing attainable and sustainable for Fort Worth residents, particularly in your district? Dr. Hall?
So housing continues to become a challenge. I know, once upon a time, I would say Crowley was probably the last place on earth where you could get a home under $300,000, and I don't think that that's the truth anymore. I think it's important that we work with organizations like Trinity Habitat for Humanity to make sure that we have affordable homes. I think it's important that we have the proper zoning to ensure that we have affordable homes. I think it's also important that we access grants and things of that nature from the federal government to help with purchasing homes, and also help with providing assistance to those who are paying rent. I think that we have to be very intentional to preserve the opportunity for our citizens in District 6 to own homes. And we also have to consider our neighbors and historic Como. Even with those development, we have to protect against gentrification. So it's important to me that we articulate a strategic plan on how we're going to respond to affordable home crisis, and that we work that plan with fidelity.
Mr. Smith?
Again, affordable homes, affordable housing, again, one of those political talking points that people just spew out, and it's just, it's nothing to it. I would say this, we have to keep the developers in check. The city on land, the city has a requirement to their citizens before they do that of developers. Before a developer comes in and decides they want to build something, what are you going to give, what are you going to ensure for the community? Not for your pocketbook, not for the city coffers, but what are you going to ensure for this community? Because you know, these multiplexes that are being built, you know, these developers understand the rules, that if they pay a certain fee, then they don't have to designate a certain percentage of those units to, what's that, you know, thank you, y'all got me. So, they are more than less willing to pay their fee, so they can just have their way. So, again, we have to just, we have to control the land.
So affordability in Fort Worth is a major issue, and I think many of us can attest that it's getting more and more expensive to live in the city of Fort Worth. And for many of us, there is more month than there is money. And working with marginalized communities, as I do every day, as the Vice President of Workforce and Career Development at Upspire, I work with individuals who are currently or formerly homeless, and we provide them stable income so that they can move out of homelessness into homes. Well, one of the things that I know, also through my service as Board Chair at Presbyterian Night Shelter, one of the things that we attempted to do in my final act of service was the acquisition of a community that we built, Journey Home Housing at Seminary, for individuals and families, parents with children. One of the crises that we have is, we have nonprofits in our city who are attempting to build affordable communities, but unfortunately, because of the way that our city structure is, nonprofits are looked at as regular developers. And I think that there is a way in partnering with Trinity Habitat for Humanity, with Presbyterian Night Shelter and other entities, that we can alleviate some of those development fees so that the cost and the dollars that they have can go a lot further in building communities.
We're just about out of time, so at this time, I'll ask each of you to make your closing remarks and summarize what makes you the best candidate for Fort Worth City Councilmember representing District 6. Sorry, Mr. Davis, you can start, and we'll end with Mr. Smith.
Sure. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for moderating, thank you to all of the sponsors who put this event together for the benefit of our community, and thank you all for your presence being here tonight. Again, I'm Darryl Davis, I'm Taylor and Gavin's dad. I'm a committed servant leader. That has been demonstrated, not just as I began this run for Fort Worth City Council, but it's been a part of who I am. From the time that I was 14 years old, working the streets in Como, doing outreach ministry at my church at Strangers Rest Baptist Church, that's where my formative years of service began. I brought that same passion to the Crowley ISD Board of Trustees, and I'll bring that same passion to the Fort Worth City Council. At the end of the day, this race is about one thing, it's about leadership. It's about making sure that we have leaders who are not afraid to lead in tough times and on tough issues. I am that leader, I ask for your support, and I ask for your vote. You can join our movement at votedarryldavis.com. That is votedarryldavis.com. Thank you all so much for being here.
Well, good evening. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, I want to thank the Fort Worth Report and other sponsors for giving us this platform to share about our candidacy. I am Dr. Mia Hall, and I'm running to be the next councilwoman for District 6. I am a proven leader, I have a track record of success. I am a small business owner, I'm a veteran educator, and I have been an elected official. As, I think, the only person on this base that has the extensive amount of experience in governing change through governance. I will work hard, I'm comfortable being uncomfortable, I say what I mean, I mean what I say. I also want to bring, I'm a mother, I'm a wife, and I bring a lot of unique perspectives that I think are suitable for the issues we're facing in District 6. I've worked as a zoning commissioner, I'm ready to talk to, to handle the problems we have with development. I've worked as an educator, so I'm ready to connect with our communities and work with the literacy issues that are facing our families. I am asking for your vote to be your next councilwoman, thank you.
So we had a similar question last night as to why you think you are the best, and I simply stated that I'm not the best, because the voters on May 3rd were determining who's the best. But I will say, I am the right choice for the position. I want to say to you all who didn't raise your hand to, when I asked the question about have you been to Fort Worth City Hall to see what's going on, to be a part of the process, I want to say to you, I want to encourage you all, from this point forward, to involve yourselves, because, like I stated, from the start, regardless of the outcome of this race, I'm going to be there, you know? I never made it about the city, it's always been about our city, it's always been about the people. So, find it within yourselves to find time to come down. $333 million, we paid for that, so you all have a place there, you all need to be there, okay? I'm sick of the weekly meetings where they just fold things through, and I'm about to stop with this last statement. Shame on you, Mattie Parker, for not being here tonight. Shame on you. Shame on you, Mattie Parker. Shame on you.
Your time is up, Mr. Smith. Thank you each for coming tonight and for sharing your platforms. All right, everybody, as we get settled back down again, we're going to hear from the candidates running for District 9. District 9 includes downtown Fort Worth, the West 7th Entertainment District, and the near Southside Neighborhood. Incumbent Councilmember Elizabeth Beck is seeking reelection after two terms representing the district, and she's facing two challengers who are both here tonight. A quick reminder that each candidate is allowed 60 seconds to respond to each question, and we ask that you speak directly into the mic, so everyone in the room can hear. With that, we'll jump into introductions. Each of you can take a moment to introduce yourselves, who you are, and why you're running. Councilmember Beck, we'll start with you.
My name is Elizabeth Beck. I'm a mother, I'm a veteran, I'm a lawyer, and for the last four years, I have had the honor and privilege of serving District 9 as your councilwoman. Serving this community is something that means so much to me, because this community gave me everything. I came from a childhood of poverty and drug addiction, and because of the opportunities that Fort Worth provided me, I'm able to sit here on this stage today as your councilwoman in District 9. And so it's my job on City Council to make sure that every child in this city has every opportunity to grow, and we do so by making sure our city thrives through safe neighborhoods, safe streets, and investment in our community.
Hello, Michael Rollerson, a big thank you to everyone for coming out today. And the reason I'm actually running here is because I think there hasn't been enough of an emphasis on affordability out here in Fort Worth. It's been much, much, much more expensive lately to actually live out here in Fort Worth, and I think a lot of that has to do with the way that we actually run the city, which has to do with, instead of, you know, helping the homeless and people that are dealing with affordability issues in Fort Worth, what's actually happening right now is we're kicking them out of Lancaster, we're policing the homeless. And I think that right there is exactly what's leading to this worse situation, where we're not actually properly investing in infrastructure, we're not properly investing in the train system, we're not properly investing in public housing for this community, and a stronger public jobs program to actually uplift the people of our community that are really struggling right now.
Hi, I'm Jenny Stewart.
The button should be at the top.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jenny Stewart, and I want to start out by apologizing for my voice. I lost my voice over the weekend, so... But I am a fifth-generation Fort Worth native, I'm a small business owner for the last 20 years, and I'm also a former chemical engineer. I am running for City Council District 9, because I believe that every person in District 9 deserves a voice. Every person in the city, every person in District 9, from all the way uptown, downtown, all the way down to Wedgewood. And I want to be that voice for the citizens of District 9. Fort Worth is growing fast, and we need someone who can make bold, pragmatic decisions for the city, and I want to be the person who can meet that growth and make those bold, pragmatic decisions. And thank you for inviting me.
Downtown Fort Worth is at the center of the city's economic and cultural life, and has earned headlines as several businesses have recently left the area. What is your vision for supporting commercial, residential, and artistic development in downtown? Mr. Rollerson, we can start with you, and then go to Councilmember Beck, and end with Ms. Stewart.
Well, I think there's a lot we can actually do. I mean, they're talking about expanding the railway system, which I think could be a great opportunity for different jobs for the people of Fort Worth. You know, I strongly believe that we need to actually drastically increase the Fort Worth Jobs Program, because, you know, what those jobs programs actually do is they help many people in our community that are currently struggling right now. A great example of how we could be, you know, able to actually do a lot more with your tax dollars is by cutting back on the privatization that's occurring, for instance, on the highways out here in Fort Worth. It's incredibly expensive to have these private companies build highways and do all these projects ourselves, when we actually can build these projects ourselves as a city, and while at the same time providing high-paying jobs to the people of our Fort Worth community. And by investing in infrastructure like this, you know, we're able to actually provide better jobs with that, and it'll bring even more companies out here, and more investments as a whole into the city of Fort Worth.
So downtown is the heart of our city, and if our heart isn't well, the rest of our body's not going to be well. So it's important to make sure that it thrives. Downtown is an entertainment district, it's our central business district, but it's also a neighborhood, which makes it incredibly complicated to navigate. There's been a lot of discussion about what's left downtown, but what I like to focus on is what we're adding to downtown, and that's almost a billion dollars' worth of investment in the southeast corner alone, with the new convention center and Texas A&M coming, and then the 20-story tower that we see going in in the old library block. So things are moving, while some things have moved out of downtown, we have a lot of things moving into downtown that are only going to help it thrive and continue to grow into the future.
So, our commercial, District 9 is the heart, am I not? Sorry, thanks. District 9 is the glue that holds the city together. It is our downtown neighborhood, and we have got to make sure that our downtown continues to thrive. And I know that we have all become aware that downtown is declining a little bit, and we're moving more towards other outskirts areas. We have got to attract businesses back to downtown, we have businesses moving out of downtown. We have got to make the city easier to work with, so that we can attract the commercial that we need to make our downtown continue to thrive. And right now, our city is extremely difficult to work with for commercial businesses. I built my building in the city of Fort Worth, it took me 18 months to do the paperwork, and only four months to build a building. Well, that's too difficult, so the city has got to be easier to work with for commercial.
Are we good? Okay. District 9 is home to the West 7th Entertainment District, which has faced challenges in regard to crime and public safety amid growth in the number of bars there. What is your approach to working with police, business owners, and residents to address these issues? Mr. Rollerson, would you like to start?
So first of all, as far as the policing... So first of all, as far as the policing is concerned, I believe strongly in a nonviolent way to actually help with policing as a whole. I think the policing can actually do great things for the community, but we need to actually focus it on violent crimes as a whole. And I think right now, especially like what I was talking about with earlier, is they use the police to target homelessness. It's much more expensive to put homeless people in prisons than it is to actually build publicly-owned housing to help members of the working-class community that are on the verge of losing their homes, and also the homeless population to actually rehabilitate them. So when I talk about crime, it's very important to actually address the problems that are going on right now and understand how these problems are caused. Because we're not just going to solve crime out here by just policing homelessness and policing marijuana is a great example. We should decriminalize these such things so we can have a better community and a safer community as a whole.
Councilmember Beck.
So in the last four years, I've done a lot to help shape and change the way, the direction of West Seventh, whether it was the open container ordinance that we developed because PD asked for it, the additional ambassadors down there, changing our zoning ordinance to slow the rapid proliferation of bars. All of that has been an effort to make that entertainment district safer. And I am so excited to share with you that year over year, this year, we are down thirty percent, over thirty percent in crime in the West Seventh area. And that is a direct correlation of the efforts from my office, working with PD, working with our business owners to implement new policies, procedures. And we're not stopping there. We have the Safe Night Initiative that the city funded to give these bar owners the tools they need to keep their patrons safe. And it is paying off in spades. And so I look forward to West Seventh being the place that we all intended it to be.
So our downtown has really got three security forces. We have the regular police, we have the ambassador program, and then we have a security force that's privately funded. And that program has worked beautifully for decades. It's why our downtown went from being a place where no one could go to being a safe, fabulous entertainment district. The West Seventh area has had some problems, but we could use these same philosophies to help the West Seventh area. Now, we have funded the ambassador program, but it's only been funded for a year because we did not get the PID passed. One of the priorities would be to pass the Public Improvement District. And then secondly, I've already been talking to the Bar Owners Association about creating a private security force similar to the one that we have downtown to help police this area, and they are amenable to the idea.
This question is from our co-host, Steer Fort Worth. The 1.16 billion Central City Panther Island project, which will reroute the Trinity River and make hundreds of acres available for riverside development, stands to transform areas near downtown. What is your stance on the project, and how should city officials be involved in the development process? Ms. Stewart, we can start with you.
I am a hundred percent for the Panther Island project. Not to mention the fact that we've already spent billions of dollars on it. It's close enough to being finished. We have got to go forward and complete this project. Secondly, as a longtime member of the Fort Worth Rowing Club, our river is so important. And then being able to use the river, utilize the river, especially close to our downtown, we need, as City Council, we need to continue to help finding the money to get this project finished. And whether that's working with our partners in the federal government, whether it's finding public-private partnerships. But the City Council's job is to figure out where we're going to get the money to finish this up.
Mr. Rollerson.
Well, I believe this is a great opportunity. Obviously, environmental reasons aside, it really needs to be done for environmental reasons, but also at the same time, we can actually use this as an investment into our community and to actually provide high-paying jobs for a lot of people in Fort Worth. I mean, there's billions of dollars coming in here for investment, so we can absolutely create an expansive jobs program with that. And what we need to do going forward with this project is make sure that we're cutting out a lot of privatization, which leads to a higher overall cost for the taxpayer and lower benefits for the employees. So if we can actually do this primarily with city employees by hiring as many people as possible from this Fort Worth community, what we can actually do is help a lot of people actually get out of poverty and deal with the homelessness crisis and deal with people that are living paycheck to paycheck out here in Fort Worth. And by doing that, we'd actually be able to uplift the whole entirety of Fort Worth, which would be fantastic. Thanks for that.
So one of the things that I learned while earning my master's in city and regional planning is that one of the biggest economic opportunities that any city has is waterfront. And so building additional waterfront in the city of Fort Worth will be an economic boom for our community. But we have to make sure we get it right. We don't want to look at Panther Island the way that we look at West Seventh today and think we just could have or we just should have. And so I think the city should be intimately involved in that process, from the infrastructure and planning the roads, the ingress and egress in and out of Panther Island, to the zoning and working with our development partners to make sure that we don't just bring a developer in, but we bring the right developer in, one that can do something on the scale that Panther Island is for us.
We're going to ask this question one more time tonight. City Council members will have a role in making a huge hire for Fort Worth, picking a new police chief to take over from Chief Neil Moakes. How would you approach that hire, and how do you plan to involve the city's diverse communities in the decision? Mr. Rollerson, we can start with you.
So yeah, I'll try not to be too repetitive because I did talk about this kind of earlier, but I believe strongly in a nonviolent approach to crime as a whole. I think that's what we should look for in a police chief, and I think we need to make sure that we're targeting things that are actually solvable crimes out here. If people are doing violent crimes, we should be targeting the police towards those sorts of things. We have a massive amount of human trafficking out here in Fort Worth. We should be targeting that. We shouldn't be targeting the homeless population. We shouldn't be targeting just a kid on the street that has a joint. We should be targeting people that are actually disrupting society and making it a more violent society as a whole, and then while at the same time having nonviolent ways such as affordable housing, publicly-owned housing, and expansive jobs programs to actually uplift a lot of our impoverished community out here in Fort Worth to actually make it even less likely for them to commit crimes in the future.
Councilmember Beck.
So the city of Fort Worth deserves the most well-trained and professional police force in the nation. And I think that we've come a long way to providing that for our residents. And so I look forward to our new police chief coming in and carrying on that really tough work that we began back in 2020 of doing to really be responsive to the needs of our community as far as our police force goes. That decision will be left up to city management, and I will let city management make that decision. But I will say that I think we need a strong leader. One thing that my time in the military taught me was that leadership starts at the top. The tone and the candor of our police department will be set by our new police chief, and I think we need one that is community-focused and continues to do the work of repairing the trust that some of our critical communities in the city have with police. I think we are doing, I know we are doing a national search, and I have voiced to city management that I would like to make sure that the community is involved in that process.
So in our Fort Worth Police Department, we are in the middle of an immediate staffing crisis. We are hundreds of officers short of where we need to be. And in hiring our police chief, we need to bring in somebody that has a proven track record of being able to attract and maintain our police force so that we can make our police force where people want to go to have a career and get us past this immediate staffing crisis. I also think that it needs to be a rigorous process. We need to have more than a one single in-person interview for each candidate. We need to have work product from the candidates. We need to have written and testing. I think it needs to be more rigorous than how we have done hiring in the past.
This question is from our co-host, Steer Fort Worth. District Nine's near-South Side neighborhood has historically been home to the city's LGBTQ pride celebration and LGBTQ bar district. What is your stance on policies affecting LGBTQ residents at the national, state, and local level? And how would you address these issues in your district? Councilmember Beck, we'll start with you, and then go to Ms. Stewart.
Sure. So it's not just the near-South Side that's home to the members of the LGBTQ community, but they live across our city and in District Nine. I have a proven record of standing strong and firm with our LGBTQ community when they've been under attack. When the mayor took away her reading pride badge, I brought it back. When fellow councilmembers refused to sign on to proclamations for honoring June as Pride Month, I brought my own proclamations forward to make sure that our LGBTQ community feels supported. I was also one of only two of three of us that chose to speak at the Help LGBTQ Candidate Forum because I thought it was important to show how responsive we are, or I am, to that particular community and make sure that their questions were answered. I would ask my opponent Jenny Stewart why she chose not to show up.
I believe that our LGBTQ community needs a hundred percent support. And I commit to you right now, I will support that community a hundred percent. I don't know why anybody wouldn't. I was unfortunately unable to attend that Help Forum, but I did speak with the organizers. I remember when every gay man I knew died. And thank God that we have programs like the Help Center. And thank God that we are not in a situation where every single person is dying. And we need to continue to support that community so that we don't ever go back to that.
Mr. Rollerson.
Well, I think it's really important. I think especially right now, in times like what we're living in right now, a lot of people get distracted. They say a lot of the problems that we're facing, and they blame it on different communities such as the LGBTQ community. They blame it on different minority groups. They blame it on a lot of different people. And I think that's really what they've been using to distract. So this is the perfect time to actually double down and show your support for such communities. And we as a city need to be more inclusive towards all different types of people because we all really have the same goals in life. We're all largely just working-class people in Fort Worth, and we should strive to make Fort Worth more inclusive for everyone and also more affordable for everyone.
District Nine contains some of the city's most historic neighborhoods and faces challenges with aging infrastructure. How would you approach investing in such neighborhoods to revitalize them without displacing residents or fueling gentrification? Ms. Stewart, we'll start with you, and then go to Mr. Rollerson.
So District Nine is home to some of the oldest and most historic communities in the city. From uptown where I live, where the first houses were built after the fort, on through Fairmount and Ryan Place with our craftsmen homes, and then down into Wedgewood where the houses have been there for over fifty years. And some of the people who moved into those houses originally are still living there. But our infrastructure is aging, and it is a problem. In my neighborhood, some of the streets don't even have curbs and gutters, and I live within walking distance from downtown. And no curbs and gutters means no stormwater management. That means mosquito issues. We have got to be maintaining our streets. And we also have aging water infrastructure. And we don't even know, we have galvanized piping that may be leaching lead into our water supply. And we don't even know for sure where that's happening or how much. We've got to get on top of these issues.
Sorry, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
District Nine contains some of the city's most historic neighborhoods and faces challenges with aging infrastructure. How would you approach investing in such neighborhoods to revitalize them without displacing residents or fueling gentrification?
Yeah, so I think there's a lot that goes into it. We definitely do need to put much more funding going into infrastructure projects. And I think a lot of the reasons we're having a higher cost of living, it's really expensive right now to buy housing, and it's reflected in higher property taxes for a lot of our residents, especially in Fairmount and really throughout the Fort Worth area. And I think a great way to actually fight back against the rising cost is actually to implement a vacancy tax. I think right now, there's an immense amount of real estate investors that are buying up land. And what it's actually doing is it's making it much more costly for the citizens in the area that have lived in that area for, in some cases, decades and maybe multiple generations. It's making it much more expensive. So by implementing a vacancy tax and taxing people that aren't actually using their property and instead are just using it as an investment, it can lead to a much more affordable Fort Worth and a better place for everyone to live.
So I think we can replace and address our infrastructure issue without spurring gentrification. I think they're two separate issues. We have to make sure that we are repairing and replacing our aging infrastructure because the city deserves a resilient infrastructure system, whether that's our roads or our pipes. I would like to note that the city of Fort Worth has no lead service pipes in your system. So please don't be misled. Now, as for gentrification, as you redevelop infrastructure, oftentimes that new streetscape can spur redevelopment. And so it's through protective zoning to make sure that we're keeping our neighborhoods whole and intact and those fringes aren't gentrified and that folks aren't pushed out. And so that's through things like protective zoning and historic overlay districts that can prevent new development from overtaking our current residents.
At this time, I'll ask you each to make your closing remarks and summarize what makes you the best candidate for Fort Worth's City Council, District Nine. Mr. Rollerson, we'll start with you, and then go to Councilmember Beck.
Great. So I think I would be a great member of the City Council, and I think it's exactly because I'm focusing on issues that affect the vast majority of people in the city. I think you should definitely look into different campaign contributions. And I by far have the most grassroots, I rely primarily on grassroots support. I have very few donors in my campaign. It's not even public because of how little money I actually get in donations. And I think that's really important because I have everyone's needs in my district to heart. I care very deeply about making Fort Worth a much more affordable place for everyone to live out here. And I think with an expansive jobs program, by bringing more affordable publicly-owned housing to Fort Worth, and by focusing on a nonviolent approach to crime, we're able to make it a safer and better place for everyone in here in Fort Worth to live.
Again, my name is Elizabeth Beck, and I am your current District Nine Councilwoman. And I am asking you to send me back to City Hall on May third. You can learn more about my policies at elizabethforfortworth.com. You can also sign up to volunteer with our campaign or make a campaign contribution if that's your inkling. You need a proven fighter at City Hall, and the Army taught me how to fight. You need someone at City Hall fighting for better infrastructure to reduce homelessness and to be your hawk on tax dollars. If I'm going to ask you for your tax dollars, I want to make sure that you trust me with those. And you can't trust me if we don't ensure that we're doing the best and the most efficient with your tax dollars. And so that's something that I've done on council for you, and I will continue to do to make sure that all of Fort Worth thrives so that the little girl from Wedgewood can grow up to be your city councilwoman.
Hi, I'm Jenny Stewart, and I'm a native Fort Worth, business owner, and a former engineer. And I will bring practical, bold, problem-solving solutions to your city council. I will be one of the only, if not the only, councilperson that has gone through the plating, zoning, and permitting process as a customer. So I'm a small, and as a small business owner, I understand what it's like to work with the city, both for the good and the bad. I want to make the city council more collaborative and more, less contentious. We have gotten away from our spirit of cooperation. I want to bring that spirit of cooperation back to the city council. And I am asking you for your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you each for coming and for sharing your platforms. You can remain seated for just a moment while we wrap things up. Thank you to all the candidates. Thank you to all the candidates who have participated in tonight's forum. Remember to join us the same time and place tomorrow for our Fort Worth ISD, TCC, and Water District Candidate Forum. And a reminder that early voting starts April 22nd and runs to April 29th. Election Day is May 3rd. Thank you all, and have a good night.